All the meeting in order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody, who braved all the heat and more heat and a little bit more heat coming here.
Get the heat on.
Yeah, we got the heat on, summertime is supposed to be. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufel.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Okay, we're all here in the heat. Uh, Bill's payable. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve Bill's payable in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and eleven cents.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any questions? Or discussion? Hearing none. Uh, roll call vote.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine. Yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Right now, I'd like to quickly amend the agenda real quick. In front of new business, I'd like to put on the agenda a recognition of Barbara Shutt, our old assessor. I mean, she's not... She's a past, a past former assessor. Who isn't that old? That's a motion.
Support. You have support. Where are you putting it?
Above new business. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. Okay, next we have public comments. Do we have anyone for public comments? Come on up and, uh, and state your name and address.
Tim Chapa, Audubon Street. As I opened my mailbox the other day and I got my tax bill, it reminded me of something that happened to me back for the winter taxes or whatever taxes those were. I diligently put my check with my taxes in the mailbox down in Florida and it took forever to get up here. Called Kristi and asked if there was anything she could do and she says, "There's nothing we can do." It's happening to a lot of people because the Florida post office is not too good. Then you called Artie and Artie told me, "Nothing we can do, Tim. We don't even get the money, it goes to the county." Okay, so I called the county to find out how much I needed to write them a check and get their address and I sent that off. Well, the county lady told me the money that I owed and she also said, "We accept postmarks." I mean, I put my check in the mail about two weeks before it was due and it took that long to get up here. My question is, is there anything we can do about us collecting it, accepting a postmark? Because I don't want to take, you know, it's only thirty dollars, but they always say every time you want to raise a tax, it's only fifty dollars, it's only thirty dollars.
Sure.
And I mean, the state accepts postmarks, federal government accepts postmarks, county does.
Mm-hmm. Okay. We can get, uh, get back with you, give you a call. Well...
No problem.
No problem, Tim. We got your number.
Yeah, you got my number.
Thanks.
I just wanted to tell my address.
That's right. We know where you live. Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
My name's Denise Verstappen and I'm at seventy-eight oh eight Anchor Bay Drive and the other residents live there too, at the first bridge. We're wondering if there could be a sign, we're having problems with fishermen on the bridge and on our private property. And the policeman told us that we should come to a council meeting and see if there's some sort of sign, and I know there's signs when you approach Anchor Bay Drive and leave Anchor Bay Drive for the fifty, it's the fifty, ordinance number fifty for the one hundred dollar fine for fishing on the roadside. So I was wondering if there was any way, and I do know, um, first bridge is supposedly going to be done in July sometime and finished in October.
Yeah, in the fall.
Sometime, give or take. But I was wondering if there is any way that the township could put a sign, maybe if it has to be after when the bridge is completed, if there could be a sign. Because, you know, I've had dead fish on my rocks by my garage, they just leave it trashed, and when we tell them they're not allowed to fish from the road, they laugh at us.
Okay.
You know, and they say, "Oh, who the heck are yous?" So we're hoping maybe the township could do something for us to put a sign up at the bridge.
Yeah, I don't, is the first bridge?
Yes.
Does it happen on the other two also?
And I don't know. I don't know anybody down at those, the second and third bridge.
Have we, have we seen that in the other bridges down there, do you know?
I have to take a look at that. I know they are posted in different locations.
Right.
I know we've lost some of the signs over the years in that.
We, we...
But I think it's been getting worse and worse as far as the...
Mm-hmm. Where are they parking, do you know?
I think they're just people down the street.
Oh, okay.
The lorries are getting dropped off. Or someone will get dropped off, or they'll park at the party store.
Okay.
Up at the corner party store.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure we can get a sign up there. Probably happen after, after construction.
Okay.
Be quite honest, I don't want to put a sign up there and...
Right, and it's going to be torn down anyway.
Right.
Because of the construction.
Yeah.
And that's understandable.
Right.
We're just hoping that we could do something.
Yeah.
On the bridge.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thanks for letting us know.
No problem.
Any other public comments? Hearing none. Moving right along the consent agenda, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of June eighteenth and the synopsis, check reports, park and rec updates for June, and accept the resignation of dispatcher Jennifer Lumpkin.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Fighting over the support.
I was first.
Gotcha.
Chris was first.
I got him.
Okay. Any discussion on this consent agenda?
I would, I would like to add that we did miss in the check run for the checks cut between meetings, was missing check three oh three eighty. Um, that was a check that we had cut on a Monday, we don't normally cut checks on Mondays, they're usually always on Thursdays, so Janet missed it when she ran this report for me, to I A E D for dispatch certifications for the police department for two hundred dollars.
Okay.
And I have a question regarding the same check run down on state of Michigan unclaimed property for nine, nine, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Can that be explained to me what that is, please?
Sure. That's mandatory reporting for 2018 with the state of Michigan, so any outstanding checks that are three years old as of March thirty-first have to be, we had to send due diligence letters to try to reissue those checks, and these are the eleven checks that were still outstanding after due diligence. So we had to report that to the state of Michigan and send them the check. They will hold the funds until those funds are claimed. So that's mandatory yearly now, starting this year.
Never, you know, unclaimed property checks, what's...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anything else on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next we have our supervisors' report. Past two weeks, we've been busy. We've had, what, Joby Noonar, had a lot of events. Joby Noonar, we had a couple nights of fireworks and hats off to all our first responders, they've been busy and I think it all went relatively as smooth as can be hoped for, you know, for those kind of things, you prepare for the worst and hope for the best, so. I've been, actually, I've been answering a lot of questions about the upcoming fire bond, and so what it is, we're, we're going to the voters to ask for a two million dollar bond to buy, for capital improvements for our fire department. Can only be used for capital improvements, fire trucks, capital improvements on the buildings, replacing boat motors. Essentially, what it will cost you, as Tim said, you know, we raised it up to twenty bucks here, twenty bucks there, it'll, for every hundred thousand dollars that your house is assessed at, it will cost you sixteen dollars and fifty cents of the taxable value. So if you have a two hundred thou, two hundred thousand dollar house, taxable value a hundred thousand, it'll, it'll cost you thirty-three bucks. And basically, in a nutshell, the, the average useful life of a fire truck is twenty years. You may get another ten years of life as a, not on the front line, but as a backup for a frontline vehicle, but frontline vehicles' useful life is about twenty years. Unfortunately, most of our fire trucks that are on the front line are twenty years and over. Close to thirty, some of them. And it's, I believe it's a safety issue for our firemen. I know the newer trucks, they have a lot more safety upgrades, if you will. When, when, it comes with the new trucks, it didn't exist with the older ones. And so we, we definitely need some help in that department. People ask me, "Well, how did we get there, Artie?" It goes, "Well, basically, boards passed and the old fire chiefs, they had a policy of buying used equipment." I don't think it's a very good policy in the long run, it's not cost effective. Actually, there was a point in time where we had a new fire truck and someone, it was rolled over, it got totaled, and insurance paid the township the money for it. Instead of buying another new truck, the township at that time went out and bought two used ones from Chesterfield. And henceforth, I mean, Chesterfield sold them because they were near...
Out of their useful life.
Yeah, they were near their end of life. And quite frankly, I think our citizens deserve better than Chesterfield's hammy downs. So we're not going to do that. And then again, too, we need some boat motors. A lot of our motors are a thousand, up to two thousand hours on it, and they're all two-cycle outboard motors, they're not cost effective, they're not efficient, and when our fire department runs these boat motors, it's not like you or I or when we go fishing, you know, you start it up, you warm them up, you know, you don't have that luxury. You get in it, you start it, and you go. And so that's harder on them, too. So we're looking at some four-stroke engines for our boat, our vessels, and our building needs some upgrades. Primarily on the island, it is law that you have to have a, if you have people sleeping overnight in a, in a fire station, you have to have vehicle ventilation system. We don't have one over there, never had one. And we're breaking my OSHA regulations, they gave us a little bit of a stay to get it fixed and compliant. Otherwise, if that was the case, we couldn't have anybody over there now. And I don't want to put the township at li, make them any more liable for any other things, so, you know, that, that's an expensive fix. And over there, we have the bathroom, kitchen upgrades, it's been tore up for about eight years plus, and they need to be finished. These are, you know, when you work a shift, you work twelve, twenty-four hours, and you got to make it fairly comfortable for these guys for living conditions. We have upgrades on the mainland station needs, too. The ventilation system there isn't really operating correctly, so there, again, we got to spend some money there, too, and stuff. So basically, that's what it's all going to be for. Billy improvements and capital improvements. This cannot be spent for operations, and my own personal belief is, uh, capital improvements like this should be paid for for bonds, operations should be paid for through the tax merge. But that's it in a nutshell, I don't think I'm forgetting anything. We are going to be downsizing our fleet, we'll probably be buying four new trucks and getting rid of five. We don't, the chief doesn't think we really need the, the fifth truck, so we will be downsizing our, our fleet some, too, with the new vehicles. Anyone have any questions about it, give me a call. Okay. Had a site visit, June twenty-fifth, from the DNR trust fund, people on the property, we wrote a grant from the DNR trust fund for property on Harson's Island for a nature park and a kayak, handicap kayak launch. I was able to present our case to their board, it went very well. They came out here for a site visit, they really liked it extremely well. In fact, we were doing the walkthrough, and you know, there's some grass there and everything, and they were just asking me about hunting and everything, and I, I saw twenty-five feet, a big buck jumped up scared that the bejesus of them and ran off. And, "Whoa, my God," they're all excited, and I told them, "Hey, I didn't even have to pay for that to happen for the deer." But, yeah, it went very good with them. Last week, I was, it was pretty cool, I intended a SEMCOG University seminar, Designing Bicycle-Friendly Roadways, and it was a very good, it was an all-day event, I got a lot of ideas. I would love to see more bike paths around this township, and they gave me ideas on funding and design, and it was, it was way cooler. It was actually three hours, we, the class split up in the middle of the day and we rode bikes for three hours around downtown Detroit, so looking at different stuff, so it was well worth it, and I made some very good contacts there, actually. We will be holding, uh, open house on the island fire station, July eleventh, from four PM to seven PM. We'll have it open up if someone's interested exactly what we're going to do with this bond money, or take a look at our trucks, they're more than welcome. I don't know, we might be able to rustle up some hot dogs, maybe, chief, or something then, and we're going to schedule another one on the mainland, probably a week or or two after that, we don't have a date for that set yet. Okay, July eighteenth, I have a interesting meeting with FEMA coastal flood hazardous people. Did you get that memo, Bill? Remember, they met in Ira a couple years ago? They're back. They'll be giving us their flood insurance study and rate maps. The good thing about this, I don't have the number of properties, what they did, they, they adjusted the floodplain maps, they actually have taken about twelve hundred homes out of the floodplain. I couldn't understand why, if this guy gets a, gets a flood elevation certificate and he's a flood, of the floodplain, and the guy on my other side gets one, why do I have to get one? It's not like we have valleys and mountains here. But, so they recognized that, and they took about twelve hundred structures out of the floodplain zone. They, they did a study on how wind-blown flooding may occur in our area, they, they looked at the, if it's a hard, hard, like a seawall, a hard shore, or a soft shore, a beach, or, or fragmies or something, and how that's going to affect different properties. And that's basically what it's going to be, it's going to be minimal effect on a lot, or most of the shoreline, I don't, I think, but I'm always leery. And we'll, we'll be there asking questions and everything, I mean, this is FEMA, I hate writing that check. And we, we got numbers from them last time they were here. Clay Township pays eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year in floodplain premiums. That's money off of people's mortgages, and we don't get anything back on it, so I'd love, well, I got, I've been working on a couple things on that, and, and my goal is to shake that up somehow. You just got to try. Let's see, we've been still getting a lot of complaints about high water. Yes, people, the water is very high. I think we're actually three inches above what we were this time last year. And we have additional signs out there with the two hundred, six hundred foot rule, we got some buoys on the middle channel that is helping out, but people still drive fast and we do have free sandbags if someone needs it, but you got to protect your own property, too. Yeah, I know, I get calls, "Artie, the waves are coming over my seawall." Yeah, they are, they're coming over mine, too. So you got to do what you got to do, and we've been trying to get more enforcement down here, it's hard, I know the sheriff's marine patrol's trying, but it's definitely a challenge, so. July fifteenth, Mickey Meljum and the Meljum Brothers.
Fifth.
Oh, fifth, I'm sorry, fifth, I'm getting ahead of myself. They're playing in Elginak Park right across from CVS. And July twelfth, Eat More Tacos, who doesn't like tacos, is playing in Elginak. July nineteenth, we move over to Clay Township, and first concert will be Burnwood. Another thing that we started this year is called Free For All Wednesday. And July twentieth is going to be over in Clay Township, and actually, that's a typo, we're going to have, oh, I can't remember their names, I got it in here. We are going to have Elfie Jean and Fella Jack, they're pretty, I don't know, they play different music, kind of hipster stuff, it's, it's actually pretty good. Notes on Wednesday, we are, the twenty-fifth, we have a blues rhythm band, but August first, we have a hot band coming on Wednesday here, is The Beatles, Amer, in America, fifty-three years of The Beatles, is a Beatles tribute band, and I heard they're very good. There'll, there'll be more on that coming down the road, so. Anyhow, that's all I have. We have a ton of stuff for Parks and Rec. Get on Facebook, like our Clay Township Parks and Rec, we have flyers for it all. We're doing art in the park during a lot of the concerts and for kids. We have a Safety Town set for, oh, August second, and then the Safety Tigers event is September twenty-ninth, we've got all kinds of stuff, and a lot of that, you have to register. A bus ride to Sunday or July twenty-second to see the Tigers, guaranteed, they're not, they might win, beat the Red Sox, but they'll at least play.
We hope.
We hope.
Guaranteed a bus ride down.
That's all we have. So like I say, get on, if you're on Facebook, go to Clay Township Parks and Rec, there's a whole ton of stuff to do. All right, uh, no unfinished business. We have Fire Chiefs Report. Thank you.
Good evening. For the month of January, uh, June.
You've been outside.
You're wishing.
For the month of June, I attended one meeting, that was the St. Clair County Chiefs Association. I also attended a class that was sponsored by Emergency Management Homeland Security, which was an active tutor class, which is very informative. I'll be working with our police chief and emergency management to set up our SOP and our action plan for the Department, so this chief and I will be working on that here in the next couple months. We did have our course of Joby Noonar, it was pretty much uneventful for us. We had eight calls, and out of eight calls, we transported two, two people, one was a laceration to the foot and the other one was swimming too much, so they were getting a touch of hypothermia, so we transported them. Pretty much working with all the agencies, and the police chief and I working with them, and us working together, it worked out real well. We were pretty pleased.
We developed some good partnerships there, haven't we?
Yes, we did. And last but least, I would like to thank Mr. Chartier for allowing us to use his property for staging area on South Channel. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for chief? Thirty-two years ago, we had a, a new assessor, and last Thursday was her last day, and we had a little, it was a nice little afternoon luncheon in the pavilion, it was very nice, and I want to thank Sherry for putting that on, too. We all kind of said our farewells to Barb then, but it, it was nice. But one, one interesting fact, thirty-two years ago when Barb started, I don't have the numbers in front of me, I think our assessed value of the whole township was about a hundred and sixteen million dollars, and now it's up over five hundred million. She raised our taxes over five hundred percent. Five hundred percent.
Sorry, she's leaving down.
So, um, I have a couple people here and want to present you something, can you come on up, Barb? Bill and, and Dan? You guys can figure out who goes first.
Barb, we give this tribute, that's what we're doing with this. Barb, we'd like to present you with this tribute from the state of Michigan. We did, we did, it says to Barb Shutt. But it be known, it is with great pleasure that we recognize Barb Shutt upon the occasion of her retirement from the assessment department of Clay Township. In light of her service, we gather with her family, friends, and coworkers to both commend and thank her for the tireless work and unwavering dedication upon her retirement. Barb will have devoted more than thirty-two years of service to Clay Township. Every day she came to work with a warm smile and lots of attitude. Barb never failed to make all of her coworkers laugh, Barb could brighten anyone's day. Throughout her thirty-two years of service, Barb has exhibited professionalism and integrity. She was surely dismissed by all women that have privileged her work. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to honor Barb Shutt for her years of exemplary service to the citizens of Clay Township, who wish her nothing but continued success and prosperity in every future endeavor. It's signed by myself, Senator Campbell, Lieutenant Governor Kelly, and Governor Sager.
Hi, Barb.
Hi.
All right, let me start off by saying that this proclamation recognizes Barb Shutt for thirty-two years of service as the Clay Township Assessor. Whereas Barb Shutt, Clay Township Assessor, is retiring after thirty-two years of dedicated service. During her time at Clay Township, she has organized and provided oversight on numerous special assignments, projects for roads, water lines, drains, and aquatic management. She has endured the aftermath of a tornado, high floodwaters, and the housing crisis, all with unwavering determination. Okay? Whereas Barb graduated from Olivet College in nineteen seventy-five with a BA in accounting, but assessing seemed to be her destiny. Her father was the supervisor and assessor for Calamo Township in Eaton County from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-six. During this time, he suffered a heart attack, and Barb stepped in to complete her first assignment role and become a certified assessing officer. She went on to work for, with an independent assessing appraisal company covering Michigan, Ohio, Indiana for eleven years. And whereas in nineteen eighty-six, she became the assessor for Clay Township and currently holds a Michigan Advanced Assessing Officer Certification and Personal Property Examiner designation. Memberships include International Association of Assessing Officers, St. Clair County Assessors' Association, and various others in southeast Michigan. And whereas Barb collaborated directly with Great Lakes Shoreland Unit in the DEQ to establish a deed application process for leased lands in the state of Michigan, that process that was established remains in place today. Whereas Barb has been a mentor to several individuals who have gone to become successful assessors and also a county equalization director. Throughout the years, she has offered exceptional assistance and support for both the local government and the residents, where I will continue to be well revered and recognized as a tribute to the assessing profession. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners does hereby adopt this proclamation. hereby adopt this proclamation, expressing our due appreciation to Barbara Shutt for her remarkable 32-year career of dedication, service to Clay Township and the community. Please join us in congratulating Barb on her retirement and the many joys and new challenges in the life to come. Proclaim this 21st day of June 2018, signed, Jeff Bohm, County Board Chairperson, Bill Greencott, Vice Chairperson, and Commissioners Greg McConnell, Carl Tommy, and Howard Hydeman, Duke Dunn, Dave Rushing. They all send their thanks for raising their taxes 500%.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Barb.
Well deserved.
You're awesome. All right. First thing under new business, we have to set public hearings for our police, fire, mileage rate, and garbage fee.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for police, fire, mileage, rate, and garbage fees for August 6, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Which will be, which will be our first public hearing without Barb.
Yes, it will. We do have support?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion, pass. Next, we have fireworks. They want to have fireworks at 1660 South Channel Drive, July 7th at 10:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to approve fireworks at 1660 South Channel Drive on July 7th at 10:00 PM.
Support. Okay, motion and support. I know the chief, you did check it out and everything's...
Yes.
Okay, so chief did check it out. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have fireworks application for 8543 Marsh Road, August 13th at dusk. And that's with the Elginak Baptist Church. It's the old drive-in theater, right?
Make a motion to approve the fireworks at 8543 Marsh Road, August 13th, 2018, at dusk.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support and the same thing, we're all set there?
I have to move it up.
Okay. I would, let's edit your motion upon chief's approval.
Okay.
I'm in the motion pending chief's approval to approve the fireworks at 8543 Marsh Road, August 13th, 2018, at dusk.
Still support.
Okay. Any more discussion?
This is a recurring request, right?
Yes.
So we shouldn't have...
Yeah, it should, it should be no problem, but...
Okay.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying yes, or aye, or whatever.
Aye.
Thumbs up. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have treasurer's CD renewal for General and Colony. You wanna talk about that, Chrissy?
We have two CDs renewing in the month of July. Looking at the rates, actually, the six-month rate, which is 180 days, went up a half a percent. So that is at two, or actually, yeah, it's at 2%. So my recommendation for the general fund would be to renew that at the 180-day term at 2%. And then that renewal date is July 14th. The Colony CD maturity date is July 25th. And I spoke with bond counsel, we actually don't need those funds until mid-August. So my recommendation would be to roll that into a 14-day CD at 1.15%.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Does everybody understand that?
Yeah, is the, the Colony is for the, for the water project?
Yes.
And is it a staged payout, payout based on performance or... What I'm saying is, is 14 days the longest we can extend that before we want access to the money?
Well, 14 days is the shortest term that they offer. And we need the money out the week prior to August 16th.
Okay. That'll, in full?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna roll the whole thing over and...
Okay.
So we don't foresee any early withdrawal or there's a possible penalty?
Not for the Colony water. Any more discussion? Hearing none. We better do a roll call on this. Roll call vote.
Who, who supported that?
I did.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we elevate full, to full-time our dispatcher. Katie, wanna come up, chief coach?
With the recent resignation of Jennifer Lumpkin in dispatch, we'd like to at this time elevate Katie Spansky to this position. Katie has been currently working in her prime position with us as dispatcher. She has been with us a couple of years now and does a fantastic job. I mean, really at the draw of a hat, she comes in anytime she can to help out and gets nothing but good reviews from everybody that works with her. So I think it's more than appropriate to elevate her up to full-time. And you're her part-time family here.
She is here, right?
Yes, she is.
Come on, come on. Get up there.
Feel the pain.
I've never done it.
That's okay. All right.
And she is a new member now of St. Clair County. She has moved down to Boone County and she is now living in St. Clair County here. So makes it even that much better.
That's right.
Great.
Yeah, and I think Jenny did a very good job for us, but she's going on to do endeavors, a new career. So I think everything happens for a reason. And I think there's good reason behind this. And I think Katie can do a wonderful job for us.
Welcome, Katie.
Well, I will make a motion that we elevate Katie Spansky to full-time.
Support.
Yeah, support, motion and support. Does anybody have any questions for Katie? While she's on the hot seat? No? Okay.
We'll let her off easy tonight.
You got lucky.
Okay, we have motion and support, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
And I'll say again, welcome.
Congratulations, Katie.
Congratulations, Carrie. Maybe 32 years from now, you can be sitting over there with Barb. Okay, now we have to find a replacement for Katie as a part-timer, right?
So what we're looking at here is, we did get an advocate from Benjamin Conroy. Ben is currently a firefighter and EMT with our fire department here at Clay Township. He does also currently work part-time for MedStar and as an EMT. And he has impressed a lot of interest and joined the family over at the fire department as well. He comes highly recommended by the fire chief. Chief Rose can't say enough for him. Very good worker and good to have, nice to have around. So I think that work out great for us as well. So we wanna bring him on board, start getting him trained up and so we can get him going here. That'll help fill that void there for part-time dispatcher that's gonna be left by Katie. So kinda moving things in seamlessly.
Can I make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we hire a part-time dispatcher, Ben Conroy.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? I would say, I've known Ben from being over in the fire department. He's been there, what, nine months? Two, no. Two years!
Two years. He's been time here anywhere.
Yeah. He's been doing a great job there and I recommend it, so.
Well, he has Arty's endorsement.
Yes, he has my endorsement. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have recognition of our Officer James Pelletier.
What this is, is each year, Mother's End drunk drivers, they put on a survey out there looking for accomplishments by officers throughout the state. With that, we submit our findings and where our stats are coming from our agency. With that being said, they did recognize Officer James Pelletier here for Outstanding Officer. And we'll go over from you, from their survey here that they published. And that is, Clay Township Police Department Officer James Pelletier displayed outstanding job for performance on showing the ability to recognize drunk drivers and taking actions on such, resulting in a high number of OWI arrests and convictions. In 2017, Officer Pelletier had 41 OWI arrests. And if you look throughout here, he's definitely on the high end of the scale. I think everything that I see is number one in our county. And he's done a fantastic job. There's no doubt he goes out there and gives it 110%. And I think all of his peers will tell you the same. At the same time, he, he goes out there and does a good job of making a lot of good friends in the community as well and doing a good job as far as community relations that go along with it. So with that being said, I'd like to present you with this, too, from Mother's End drunk drivers. We can hang you somewhere that you can find a room. And on behalf of myself and our department, thank you very much and keep up the good work.
Thanks for keeping our roads safe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. AT&amp;T Right-of-Way Renewal. With, this is, we have to renew this every five years as part of the Metro Act. AT&amp;T, this is for copper wires, not anything to do with cellular, which I'm talking to them right now about smart cell towers in the township. They pay us X amount of dollars for every linear foot of copper wire that's in our road right-of-way. And this is just renewing the agreement. We're kind of, we really can't negotiate higher or, it is what it is. It's a state rate. This is just saying that we'll just keep it going. I'm not sure what we get, about $10,000, $12,000 a year from these guys for having, giving them the right to put their wire in our right-of-way. So I have to have the board's permission to sign this.
Mr. Supervisor, I'll make a motion that we approve the AT&amp;T Right-of-Way Renewal.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Sue, roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Motion carries. Board member comment, Cindy?
Well, July 9th is the close of registration for our August election. So if you want to be able to vote in August, you have to have, be registered by July 9th. July 19th at 4 o'clock is the close to register candidates without political party affiliation with a qualifying petition. The only thing that we have on our ballot is our treasurer's position and she's currently unopposed. I also want to give best wishes to Jennifer Lumpkin on her new chapter with her new employment. And congrats to Katie and Ben, welcome. And congrats to James.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Barb. Job well done. Helped me out numerous times in that office. And congratulations to Katie and Ben, and especially to Officer James Pelletier. Good job. Thank you.
All right.
I guess I chime in the same thing. Congratulations to Jennifer coming on board with us and to Katie, I'm sorry, Katie. And congratulations to James for his outstanding work on the roads. And to Barb, who I've known for all the 32 years she's been here. So, well, we got lots of congratulations here. And to Ben, too. Can't forget Ben.
They stole the words out of my mouth.
Yeah, I know.
Katie and Ben, I look forward to following your career as you move forward with Clay Township. Officer Pelletier, thank you for keeping our families safe. We appreciate it. And Barb, we will miss you again. Will you come back next meeting?
We're taking the keys away.
Yeah, I just wanna open it up to the, the fire village and let my, let the public know that, you know, I'm available for comment if anybody wants more information on it. Talking about the trucks, the engines, the pumpers, the mini-pumpers, the outboard motors, all things that in my mind probably make a lot of sense. Protect this community, kinda elevate our, our safety status a little bit. So I just wanna put myself out there and say that I'm available for, for comment. If you catch me at Kroger at the gas station.
You don't Kroger.
You don't go to Kroger.
Catch my wife at Kroger. You could slip her a note, she'll get it to me.
Thank you.
I have one more thing. If anybody goes by the Harson's Island Fire Department building, notice the beautiful plants that the garden club put out in front of it. That we water and make sure they stay alive.
We had a couple of calls already today inquiring about summer tax bills. And those were mailed on last Friday, June 29th. So you should anticipate those in the mail.
I got mine today.
Hey, thank you.
I'm not getting applause for that.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yay.
It is what it is. And I'm sorry, what was it?
Taxes went out. Tax bills went out.
And as a reminder, we are open one...
We are open Fri- yes, we will be open September 14th for tax, final day for tax collection.
From 9 to 5.
From 9 to 5.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for, everybody for coming and big kudos, of course, to Barb. And I've known her long. I was trying to think how many people she's helped over the last 32 years, 'cause they're busy, you know, people come in, probably five, six a day, that just have nowhere else to go and they say, "Where's Barb?" Now we're gonna have her, her address. Now we're gonna hand her, hand her, hand them her address and phone number, but no. But thank you much. And James, you're doing an awesome job. I mean that wholeheartedly. I see you dealing with people and like chief said, you know, you do make friends in our community and, and it's, it's great. Thank you for everything else. And everybody else, good meeting, guys.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Okay.
Aye.
Bye.
I said aye.
We're outta here, I guess. Thanks for coming, everybody.